Well, good evening and welcome to the June work session for Wasika Public Schools. Today is Thursday, June 2nd, 2022. It's 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. So today is our workshop, so we are highlighting two of our staff members and then we'll have a discussion about facilities again. But I did just want to highlight or congratulate again our graduates from last Sunday. How many did we graduate from the high school?
Hundred and twenty-one.
A hundred and twenty-one. And today we had the privilege of seeing eight graduates from the ALC as well, so that was awesome. But also congratulations to all of our staff who made it through the year. And your summer break is well deserved, so those of you that are taking a break. So then we'll move on then to our staff spotlight and Mr. Hudson, you can introduce.
Yeah, very good. So as we end our school year, one of the things we talked about wanting to hear about this year for our board goals is to hear from our some of our administrators as well. So we had the opportunity to spotlight much of our staff throughout the course of the school year. And for today, we'll have a chance to meet, hear from Dr. Jason Miller, our junior senior high principal, and Jake Hager, our ALC principal, about how the year went and how the year has ended. And then in our next meeting, we'll hear from John Hupmeyer and Ben O'Brien for our elementary kids. So, Mr. Miller, I'll give you the floor there.
Okay. Well, kind of like you alluded to, there have been, it's crazy to be at this point in the year, you know? There are so many things that seem like yesterday and others that felt seemed like 20 years ago within the same year. So we're definitely winding down. Finals wrap up tomorrow for our senior high students, junior high kids. They have an altered schedule, so they have Junior High Talent Show in the afternoon. They have some mini sessions. It's just trying to give them some variety, keep them focused long enough to get through the six hours. But they'll, you know, it's tailored to their needs and will help them, you know, end the year positively. Commencement, obviously, has been the focus of a lot of things and is the focus of a lot of things at the end of the school year, as it should be. It went well. We had decent weather. We didn't have any crazy shenanigans, at least that I'm aware of. And I think next year, at the last meeting, the board, you know, agreed with the calendar adjustment to move it up on Memorial Day, which I think is a nice thing for, for families who want to travel, or even they can still do their parties and things on that weekend. And also, I talked with representatives from the ministerial board and Baccalaureate, we're actually going to move to the Wednesday night before commencement, so that it's not too, you know, just to kind of help things for families, hopefully. Along with commencement, as several of you were there, we had a memorial for the student that we lost, Lexi Teigs, back in her sophomore year. And so that was nice to, you know, I'm glad that her mom came to, I think it was a good kind of closure of that piece. You know, there'll be lots of those for her, for her life. So that was really nice. Some other things I wanted to highlight from the spring, you know, our sports teams have done well. It's been so, I mean, the weather was hard, right, for a while, but they needed a, I can't remember what the term is, a stop clerk or an end, something for track. Yeah, see. Where I was just helping get kids lined up. And it was a night that was just, all of a sudden, it was a beautiful day, a beautiful night. We had kids from like five other schools and all of them were happy and in good spirits. And it was just so nice to see kids enjoying what they were doing, you know? And so that was a lot of fun. I'm not sure if all of you made it to our Legally Blonde performances, but it, it was spectacular. And it's just really built some momentum for moving into the future. And next year, I'm not sure if all of you have heard, but we are going to do Mamma Mia. So that's exciting. And Anna Pollack has done a great job, you know, kind of pushing things and getting kids involved. Honors Night was an amazing night as well. Over $137,000 worth of scholarships were awarded to our students. And I was talking with a previous counselor from our district that works in the District of the Cities, and they have a similar night, and it's nowhere near that amount. And this is a large, much larger school district. So that says a lot about Wasika and the people that invest. So it feels like, you know, at the beginning of the year, it felt like you drive past the junior senior high school and you see the roof lifting off with energy and all kinds of things. But I feel like we're getting back into that groove. And I'm looking forward to fall. I think, I'm hopeful that everybody can have a, last summer wasn't as much of a letdown because everyone's like, what shoe's going to drop? What's going to happen? We don't know what fall's going to look like, but we have a better idea of that. And then we can continue to, you know, just dig into that and what's best for instruction and assessment. And for me, it's about making learning visible for students and for their parents, so they know this is what I'm learning and this is how I'm doing with, in those areas. So looking forward to the break, but also looking forward to a new school year, so.
Any questions for Dr. Miller before we?
Can you expand on what you were just talking about at the end about being able to better understand?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What students are learning and, yeah.
So when, when we work with curriculum and things, of course, you know, we base them on the standards that are provided by the state or national, depending on the subject area. And really trying to connect, so we've worked on our enduring understandings and drilling that down to learning targets and then aligning those learning targets with the different activities, the different classroom learning that they do. So they know, all right, these are, this is the target for today, or these are the two that are for this section of a unit. And then when they take an assessment, those would be aligned to what they're trying to show for their learning. So a kid could break it down and be like, well, I know these learning targets, but these two I'm, I need to learn more. So they can focus on that, depending on the curriculum, like a language arts curriculum is cyclical, so things come back. And so like next time, or is it something I need to relearn in order to move on to the next piece? And so teachers are, some are at different areas of comfort with that than others. So that's what I mean by making it visible. So even parents can look at calculus learning targets, which I'd be like, what? But, okay, so these are ones you get, these are ones you not, you don't get.
Yeah.
I don't get any of it, but do you know what you need to do? You know, so it just kind of helps them, equips them with information to help their kids if they can.
So you think by next school year, we'll have more of that available from the parent perspective?
That's, that's the constant goal. We started working on learning targets three years, probably four years ago.
Okay.
And then you know what happened. And so we're just kind of like, get that groove part, kind of getting back into that groove of, okay, we're getting, feeling things out. Now we'll be able to kind of get back into looking at that, so.
Awesome.
That's incorporated as part of your vision card stopping rules too.
Yep, yep.
I happened to check the daily announcements today and I appreciated that you had some, save the dates for August. And one of them is some changes to your open house. You want to maybe give people a preview of that?
Sure. And so last year, we started it this way, but you know, you got to build so people know, right? And so open house will be throughout, well, let me back up. Open house will be for grade, for all grades, eight, seven through 12. We're going to have seventh grade orientation earlier in the week, but they can still come for orientation, of course, so the parents can be teachers and those kinds of things. And my vision is to have our commons set up where they have different, like all the different activities, like robotics and gaming club and all the different types of activities that kids can be a part of and have some students there sharing, hey, you can join this. And, you know, especially for some of our younger kids with some of the things that they can join in. But it'll also be a time, we're going to have pictures where they'll get their pictures taken. Sometimes they dress up and look nice and they go, that's not the main reason, but we'll still have a picture day later, which will be retake or, you know, so they have that, they'll for sure get an opportunity to get their pictures taken. But they'll get to be, pick up their Chromebooks and just kind of do some of those things and be able to go about the building. Of course, I really, Elizabeth, we got to talk about this. Yeah, she always dreads that. No, I'd love to have some food trucks there. I mean, I want to make it big. I want to get one of those big, like balloon guys that are, you know, I don't know how much those are, Elizabeth, but. So just celebrate coming back to school and getting, you know, kind of that excitement going. And so that's, that's part of that, so.
Awesome. Well, thanks for previewing that.
Yeah.
Build that energy.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like a blue and a gold one, Elizabeth.
Yeah. Transition now. I don't know if I can beat that. No, I mean, all in all, it's, it's been a good year. I mean, like everybody's heard throughout the year, it's, it's been hectic. I mean, I'll be the first to admit that, but when you really boil it all down, it's been a good year. I mean, we've got, we were able to do a lot of new things at the ALC this year. We were able to hire a new teacher with Rob Winterfeld coming in as our art and Fayed teacher. We changed up our schedule quite a bit. I mean, our schedule is Monday through Thursdays and then Fridays are there for check and connect time, just more one-on-one help for students that need that one-on-one support. And then in the afternoons, being able to offer symposiums. So offer our teachers a chance to teach outside of their field. And it's a way for us to give more opportunities and more experiences to our students. That's one area that they are behind usually. It's not an academic gap, it's an opportunity gap. So like our very first symposium, our science teacher, he brought over all his canoes and kayaks and we took kids down to Clear Lake Park and some kids learned how to canoe and kayak. Others loved it and we had like a little armada out on Clear Lake. And our social studies teacher, he was teaching kids how to tie dye because, well, he likes to wear tie dye and he turned Tuesdays into Tie Dye Tuesday. So now if you come up to the ALC on Tuesdays, you'll see a lot of kids wearing their tie dye shirts. And I think it helps build the community too. So it's just different opportunities like that and bringing different services into the school as well. We had a lady that came over, she does like rescue animals and then trains them how to be support animals. And being able to show our kids that want to do something with animals, it's not just being a vet tech or a vet. There's all these different opportunities. So that's been a really cool thing that we got to implement this year. And we'll carry those things on to next year and tweak them and make them better and more supportive and things like that. So, I mean, another big thing is bringing the junior high over from the junior high to the ALC. And I'll be the first, I think when me and Jason talked about it, I'm like, I don't know about that. And it was a great thing. I mean, it was chaotic to start with, but like sitting down with Rob, so he's our art and Fayed teacher at the high school, he's also the art and Fayed teacher for the junior high kids. And being able to sit down with Rob, sit down with Lori and really look from where we started to where we ended. I mean, it's just been huge growth for myself, for the teachers, for the students. And being able to talk about where do we see that program going? I think one of the big things that we talked about is when we brought it over is being able to get those students the help that they truly need. So if we can start reaching them in some of the eighth grade, making that successful transition over to the high school in ninth grade, and sort of looking at, you know, getting more like 50% social emotional activities into the junior high curriculum every day and 50% academic. And really starting to build even more supports on the mental health side of things. And then sort of turning our, creating our own gifted and talented services into next year's curriculum for the junior high and getting them into, and we did it with a few kids this year, and we saw great successes. And if they're doing really good at the junior high level, bringing them into some of the high school classes, the electives towards the end of the day, where the classes are a little smaller because we're able to have more teachers teaching. And then what was really cool to see is our high schoolers just naturally sort of taking a mentor role with some of our junior hires. So that was really cool to see. So, I mean, it was, it was a hectic year, but it was a great year. All in all, I mean, with the changes we made, just without doing anything extra, somebody could earn 24 credits in a year. Whereas for the first half of the year, credits weren't really there. Because I really think everybody was figuring out what is it to be back in school? Myself, the staff, the kids. And I really think halfway through, you started to see that switch. And we're seeing more and more kids or students earning credit. Probably had about half, half the students turned in their Chromebooks today because they're like, you know what? I'm good. And then before they would look or turn it in, and then we'd look at their credits and they're sitting at five or six classes passed, which in all honesty, if one of our students is passing six out of eight classes, they're on par to graduate, just like in a normal setting. If they're earning seven or eight, they're going above and beyond. And more and more, they'd be at five. And I'm like, well, this one's 50%. How about we go and check in with so-and-so and get that up to six or seven? And they're like, you know what? Yeah, I'm going to do that. And so that's, I really think the mindset is really coming back around to what is it to be a student? What is it to be in school? So that was really, really cool to see. We're seeing more six of eight, seven of eight, eight of eight students. So we even have a student, I was talking to him today, really interested in teaming up with the CINCH program for next year because he's just in a perfect position. And being able to get him into those type of programs. So it's really been good. And now we're looking at summer school, switching over to that. I think we have 50 students from the high school, 30 from the ALC, so many from JWP, so many from Waterville. So, yeah, now we're on to that. So it's, it's been good. It's been a good year. So just makes me excited for next year, looking at those things, so.
I just have a, more of a comment than a question, but at the graduation today, first of all, I think it's so neat that each graduating student selects a teacher to talk about them. But then what I was really kind of struck me today, that I hadn't, I don't know, maybe it's gone on before, but I just hadn't noticed as much, but sometimes there was a dialogue going on between the student and the teacher as the teacher was talking about them. And I, I really thought that was neat. I thought, what a, what a unique way to culminate your time at the ALC and graduate from high school.
Oh, I just think it really shows the relationships that the students are able to build with the staff and the staff were able to build with the students. I love the tradition.
Yeah.
I'm working on not getting choked up myself up there, so.
Eventually. That close.
Exactly. It was only twice this time, so.
Then most of the school year, you had about 80 students at least, is that right?
So we did, we weren't at 80. That just, it would have been really too, too much for some of our hours, but we averaged right between 72 to 75 the whole year. So, yeah.
That's a lot.
It's been a big jump for the last few years, so.
Well, yeah, you're doing something right and getting these kids graduated and that's our goal. And, and, yeah. And, and giving them the support that they need, both academically and, and the social emotional stuff is really, that's cool, so.
Anything else for Jake or Jason?
Sounds like a good year, you know, overall. So what were some of your favorite moments out of this last year? If you could pick one or two.
I can't remember. I mean, I would go grad, both the graduations, just because I love them. But, you know, some of the symposiums, Bray Park is always going to be a highlight for us. So yesterday, that's a tradition that's been around before I was here. And we just take everybody out to Bray Park and it's really just a time to relax. And what, what I love about those opportunities and different field trips is we see the kids in a different light and the kids see us in a different light. And taking, we always take, go ice skating a few times a year. And it's just, it's fun to see them outside of school, you know, and really see who are they? And they get to see who are we, you know? Just some of those different activities.
I think for me, seeing some of that joy come back, like homecoming and the craziness that is and the parade and, you know, the homecoming game. I, and the homecoming dance this year, I've never seen that many kids. I mean, it was like 400 or more, easy.
Wow.
And we had kind of forgotten how we did things a little bit too. So it was like, wah. And snow week and, you know, getting to get our current eighth graders to a Courage, the Courage Retreat to kind of get that back up and going and seeing the impact that that has. And truly commencement this year for me, that group, they, they were interesting as seventh graders, like I mentioned. But it's just so fun to see the maturity. And then there are several, you know, people that I know because of being there that bear, barely made it, but they did.
Yeah.
You know? And we worked with them and we figured out ways to, you know, let's do this and just finish this and, you know, do this. And we got them through. And their lives are going to be so much better because they did.
Yeah.
You know? And not that you can't go back and, and get it and still make that and everything, but it was, it was great to see that and to see people there cheering for them. And, you know, that was, that was great, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank, thank you both.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, I'll take just a blue one.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. So that was our staff spotlight. Now we're going to move on to our further discussion on facilities.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And I have a, I'm going to pass that around, just kind of an outline of, of some of the things I want to cover this evening, just for your reference. There's not going to be any particularly new information on the paper, mostly just to keep us on track for the things I wanted to cover. And for those of you on the facilities committee who have spent a lot of time thinking about this, this is a little bit repetitive for, for you, based on our conversation just on Tuesday. But what I really wanted to cover tonight was kind of go through, here's all the information that we have at our disposal. Here's what we've worked on for the last several years. We think about facilities. If we want to go into review of any of those, we certainly can. Or maybe we, we just know they're there, we're reminded that they're there and we can work that through. So I want to go through that with all of you, which includes multiple resources that we've talked about. Ask any follow-up questions about those things that board members have and/or give us, give us some feedback on some things. And really probably the most important bullet down there towards the end is, do we have any direction we can take at this point? And, you know, I have thoughts that I'll, I'll share with the board when we get to that point, that you all can obviously give your feedback on. And then we can decide what we want to do for next steps. Because really our goal now at this point is to, is to start putting some action into what our next steps look like. We've gathered a lot of information. And now it's a matter of making a, probably some sort of choice in terms of the, you know, the why in the road, for lack of a better word, the fork in the road, which then leads to more information and more things we need to do. In order to be most efficient in that work, I think there'd be some benefit to choosing one of those paths on the fork, at least for the time being, and then proceeding down that road, which we'll get to in a minute. So just for a reminder of, of the board, for the resources that we have had available to us. So we had Morris Leatherman do that survey, which Peter came and shared with us last time, gave you his feedback. And you all, I'll have access to that, had the chance to review that. And that gave us feedback that was similar in a lot of ways to the opt-in website survey that we did. It provided some different information as well and some different context around the information. But we didn't get a lot of different information in terms of one option versus the other, a cost factor. You know, one thing that is unique in our scenario right now is, excuse me, is we are dealing with two potential options that fall into the same general price category, the same Jane, same general price range. We get to the end of our conversation tonight, I'm going to provide a proposal for how we could narrow that down even further. But I think to start, they're similar enough and can be scaled similar enough, then it becomes more about which of those options we think is better for our kids in the programming. And then we'll take the next step and then see where that goes. As a reminder, we have two task forces who in 2019, 20, that was led with Superintendent Lee and primarily internal feedback with board members and, and staff and principals. And then task force, we did this last winter, which involves some more community members in that regard. We also have got quite a bit of staff feedback through those task forces, through their participation in the survey, plus the anecdotal pieces of just hearing about, you know, what it is that we would prefer and what it is we'd love to see. And I think it's no secret that particularly at Hartley, the staff is more concerned right now that there's some action that we move forward with thinking as opposed to what it is. The general consensus, at least in conversations I've had, has been that we would consider potentially the addition at West being the choice. But they, our staff at Hartley is so good and so dedicated to their work. If, if the board and all, we determine the best option is to remodel Hartley, they're going to be behind that 100% as well. So it's more about, can we put some action to that more than anything else. Tax impact statements, we've talked about that. We've talked about what potentially thresholds are in terms of what Peter Leatherman was able to provide to us. Twenty more dollars a month, could you stand? Could you stand to afford or nothing? That sort of thing. What I'm going to pass around for you now is just in early April, and this came probably a week after the survey went out for the first time. This is just some, some updated ideas or estimates that Ellers put together for us. It doesn't significantly change the dollar values that we looked at earlier in the spring, but it's just the most updated for your discussion only in terms of what the tax impact would be for a bond of those particular levels. Just for your, for your information with that. And the significant difference there is the average interest rate increasing somewhat based on what they're hearing could happen with the, in the future forecast. This is really important that we know this is a preliminary estimate. When it comes time for actually proposing a project, which, no, this is not a voting meeting tonight, nor will it, we don't have to make a decision on even, even this November until August. So we'd narrow that down on what the most current rate would be at that time. But just for the board's reference there, the tax impact on our survey also, you know, tells us that the, the support is really pending what that impact would be. You know, I think there's a lot of, as, as Peter shared with us last time, there's a lot of willingness to have the discussion. There's, there's no more willingness to say, yep, we're in than we ever would expect without more information. So that's, that's to be understood as we get through that process. Community development, I've done some work in terms of just having conversations with our city and with our county, what's happening from a development perspective. We know there's some, some lots out on the north end of town that are looking to be developed at some point. There's been various housing units discussed over the last couple, couple months in terms of what the city and county would love to see happening. There's not a scheduled timeline of any of those that would impact any of our decision right now, other than we know there are some plotted and proposed ideas out there in the north end. There's also some things out on the southeast end of town. We know some of those things are just part of the conversation. You, I sent yesterday in the, in the update copies of the 10-year LTFM and the five-year capital outlay, just for your reference there as well. So you have them. I think the biggest point of sharing that with the board right now, and Colin, you maybe can speak to this here for a moment if you would. You know, what you see right there is what our current plans look like. If we were to choose to go out for a proposed facility bond, that could impact some of the things that are on here. I identify like the bathroom projects at Hartley may be able to be taken off the list. On the other hand, if we choose not to, some of the things on there may have to be pushed off even further as we have to prioritize things as they come up at potentially some of our current buildings. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, because as you said, we've been doing this for several years. The process that Elizabeth and I went through, even before these last six months, has been to position the district and do the hard work on the front end because we wanted to structure all of that financially, based on whatever decision our board decides to make for the community, so that we're able to move forward with either decision or, as Eric said, reprioritize. So we're in a very confident position with these plans.
Very good. Then the next bullet really talks about just the fact that we do still have some questions we have to answer. And I, I separate these questions into what I call internal and external questions, because some we can answer because we have relative control over internally and some we do not. And for example, we have to continue to look at our enrollment, enrollment projections and determine how confident we are with our enrollment projections going forward. The last two years have made it quite difficult to identify who shows up September 1st to who we thought who we thought was going to come when we left in the end of May, June 1st. Um, I think that's settling down now as the pandemic mobility, people have chosen, but they're going to go online, if they're going to go to non-public, that's kind of settled down a little bit. But, um, certainly as we, as we let kindergarten finalize here over the next six to eight weeks, getting ready for the fall, um, look at what our enrollment projections are going to be. Um, we, we're not seeing people leave the community, um, any more than we, we had previously planned for just leaving the community, but we did see some of that drop pandemic related, and we hope that stabilizes out now to see that. Um, the, the question about central, and, and that's more of a, a question, quite frankly, about communicating to our, to our public what we're currently using the central building for, such as our current programs. Um, if we were to try to place any of our other K-12 programs in this building, we don't have enough empty classrooms in this building to house an entire elementary school without displacing lots of current programs and putting them where? In the building we just said we couldn't habitate, or, you know, we couldn't be in? That's, that'd be a interesting conversation, right? Um, for that process. Um, there also would be a cost to retrofit this, to an elementary school, um, and the LTFM plans, you know, continue to be here at this building if we choose to do that. So it's more of a discussion point than anything else as we, as we talk through that. Um, there really isn't a, a clean, like zero cost option to, to move, move anybody here. There's going to be a cost to that along with anything else. Um, question about what to do if we were to abandon the Hartley building? If we were to move out of that building somewhere, um, what to do with, what to do with the building? And some of that, there's going to be an unknown piece, like we're going to try to sell the building and we're going to try to sell the land. Um, some of that is, you don't, you don't always have an answer for at this point, other than that's our intention. Um, I started talking with a little bit with our, with our city and, and county partners about if there's any appetite for any of that. And I, um, just casual conversation at this point, though we haven't, I know they have work to do with their particular, you know, um, board and council as well, but, um, working through with that. So, um, that'll be something we have to answer when we get to that point, internal question. Um, and then the traffic around out there at the north side, we're going to call it that, the West Junior Senior High site, we know that traffic in and out of there is a challenging, challenging piece already. Uh, we know that if we were to add, you know, 450 more students to that mix, there would have to be something significant we'd have to do. Um, as in, in terms of traffic flow in and out, potentially in terms of how we communicate and enforce some of that traffic in and out potentially, um, it's not something that I have on the top of our mind as a have to, but something that did come into, into play for me was, do we start our elementary school at a significantly different time than our high schools? So do we start 45 minutes earlier at, at a K-6 building than we would a 712 building to maybe half that traffic coming in and out? Um, there's a lot of implications with that. Community impact with childcare and parents' jobs and transportation costs, and that's not a, that's not a, hey, I think we should do this comment. That's a, that's part of the discussion about how we work on that traffic piece over the next, next few weeks. Um, but then there's a lot of external questions as well. Um, you know, inflation, what are our district costs? I mean, we just, we just literally looked at what our next July 1 insurance rates are going to be for property and, and, um, and our workman's comp. And, you know, our, the value to replace our buildings has gone up roughly 30% on what they, the insurance is assessing to replace our buildings. So what that rate will actually be, we're trying to work on, we're working on that yet. We're not there yet, but the costs are there and our residents are facing the same inflation. So that's something to remember. Um, property values, we know that Wasika County just had to go through a, a, um, I'll call it a re-normal, a re-norming of what the property values were based on, whether they were based on what home sales have been. And we, it's an unknown yet, but the tax impact of that will be, um, we'll know that when we get into our shoots in taxation for the next year for, for pay 23. So that's just something to think about. Our ag credit and the tax bill is something that unfortunately is becoming less and less of a question. Each day the legislature does not go back to special session. It potentially, um, we've answered that question. Um, the, the tax bill had some significant local operating, um, LOR, local operating, local optional revenue equalization aid, which would have reduced taxes for every member of our community. And the state aid would have increased on that. They didn't get that done at the legislature. They also had a proposal to go from 70% to, I believe, 80% of the ag credit for, for taxes. That didn't get done either. And so if, if they were to go back to special session and do any of that, that does impact positively the, um, the taxes that our, our community is paying for school, for their school, uh, tax. Right now there's not, that, it's becoming close to unfortunately being crossed off the list and we have to work through that. It's a net zero for us. It's not a lot, it doesn't get any worse, but it doesn't give us that potential benefit. Um, and there's always the cost to delay, which is a little bit of, I say it's an external question because we make the assumption that it's going to cost us more in the future the longer we wait, which is probably a pretty fair assessment. How much that is, is, is a little bit of a guess at some point, right? They're, they're estimating, um, and construction costs, um, increasing by percentages. Do you remember the percentage off the top of your head?
Anywhere between, uh, 30% up to with copper and electrical to 120%.
Right. And so at what point does that level itself out? Because you have, you have to assume at some point it's going to level itself off. So at what point do you, do you get in the game for that? So, so that's a lot of, oof, for me, but it, it shouldn't be anything new to any of that. That's what we've been looking at for the last two years. And so really, um, what I would love to open the floor to is if board members have thoughts on what we've gathered so far and what, what your feedback is, that'd be great. Um, and when I say, and then I'd love to go into the conversation of, do we have a, a preference of the next steps? And really as I, we were talking in the committee, I guess I'm going to get out in front of those comments, sorry. I just have to, I'm just going to, I'm going to put it out there to maybe guide us a little bit. We were talking in committee the other night, there was a really good point raised about, you know, it's really hard to, to know without, is that traffic going to cost us anything extra? Is the, um, you know, what will we do with the building, those kinds of things? It's hard to say yes, 100%. Or what can we really get done for this amount of money or that amount of money, that kind of thing? And so I guess what I'm asking the board tonight to give us some feedback on is if the board is feeling strongly that remodeling Hartley is the choice that we think right now is the programming choice we should go with, that gives us direction as a board or as a administration, that I don't necessarily need to worry about the traffic pattern at WIS right now. I can worry about making sure we plan that, that project. However, if the board is feeling like right now, the best option, I don't mean now as in ask the question now, I mean now as in that's what we think is the best option, is, is exploring FERGER, the, the WIS expansion or the WIS addition, then we can kind of put the Hartley remodel on the shelf for a moment. And my proposal would be to really dig into what's the traffic answer? What's the building answer? I can get back with our consultants and say, okay, for 25 million, what does the scope of this look like? For 28 million, for 31 million? I can bring that to the board back in a couple of weeks and say, here's what it looks like. And then we have the conversation potentially of the very last bullet of, is there a timing? We're going to just go. We are on pace in the communication and the work that we have done, that if the board chooses to even ask a question this fall, we'll be prepared to do so. Um, but we have, I, I think right now, um, the next pertinent step is to decide if it's, and I, I want to say this as respectfully as I possibly can, we need to decide if it's worth doing the work to answer the rest of those questions on the addition. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So I, I probably showed my cards, but that's, it's a work session. So, I don't know, I, I would open it to any then comments of what the board is thinking right now.
Well, at some point I would, I could, I would appreciate a little bit of a walkthrough of the, um, LTFM and the five-year capital, just because I, I'm not in another committee where I get to see this information, but, um, but I'm, I'm waiting, I'm willing to wait to do that until other questions have been asked, but if anyone has, so maybe that's not the right time to go through that yet, but I would, I wouldn't mind a little bit of a, here's what I should be looking at in all this paperwork. So.
Okay. Any comments or should we just go through that?
Maybe, yeah, let's go, let's go ahead and go through.
Colin, just want to take them through that, just highlights, yeah?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be the whole thing, just kind of.
No, no. Uh, the highlights on this plan, uh, as I said earlier, we're, uh, doing the difficult work on the front end of making sure that Elizabeth and I structured, uh, our finances each fiscal year to fit within our budget.
Okay.
And address what were those most pertinent needs, uh, that, uh, we have within the district. You'll see that within this upcoming fiscal year, uh, we have quite a few, uh, projects that are going to be in our, uh, building envelope, our accessibility, uh, and we have other ones in our mechanical, uh, as well.
Okay.
And they're structured in that way because, um, to make it short, it's easier to run forward than it is to run backwards.
Yep. Okay. Which plan are you looking? I mean, there's a, I'm sorry, there's a lot of columns, a lot of numbers, and we have three different pieces of paper, and I just want to know which one we're talking about. So.
If you would look at, uh, both plans, uh, for the five-year and 10-year combined, on the column, uh, under, uh, fiscal year 2023.
Okay.
The one highlighted is for Hartley, that's what?
Uh, all of the expenses, uh, for all the schools are listed in that column. And for how the spreadsheet is laid out, I think, Elizabeth, please feel free to jump in at any time. But that is where you're seeing the, uh, the projects and the expenses that we are moving into, uh, as of July 1.
And the projects that Colin was referencing, um, the building envelope and, and the interiors as well as the mechanical systems, those are going to be on the long-term facility maintenance plan.
Okay.
So that's the one, um, on the very first page, I think it says updated 52722. That's going to be the long-term facility maintenance. Uh, so that's where we do have a considerable amount of projects scheduled right now for Hartley in 22, 23, but as Colin said, we would rather have them in there because then it's easier to pull them out and or adjust should something change or should, should , um, new equation come to light of exactly when we're going to move forward. Um, and again, we would rather plan for them and say, you know what? It's okay, we can delay that.
Okay.
At least we know that it's within our financial realm and the public piece basically to make sure that we can still budget and, and adequately cover it and fund all of our other projects at the same time, um, that we feel are necessary to move forward in 22, 23.
I mean, in a, the revised 52722 long-term facility, you have a couple, you know, rows they are highlighted in yellow. I mean, is this, and I'm reading, all those highlighted looks like for Hartley, is this all or why those two rows are highlighted? One is for, why those? Is it really the 33,955, 900? And then the other one is 133,000? Is this all? I, I just want to understand why they are highlighted. Is that, you know, I would like to know in this long-term facility plan, if we are deciding to, you know, replace Hartley or do, you know, remodeling or do nothing? You know, what is the amount of money for next 10 years that we are planning to use for Hartley? And why those two lines are highlighted?
This is if everything stays the same, right? Or?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
This is if we do neither option?
This is, uh, this option, this plan right here is, is if you do neither. This is if you do, this is no preference towards either plan.
Yep. Okay.
This is as neutral based on needs of the district, not on one preference of plan over the other. And, uh, as towards, uh, your question perhaps on why the, the line item, if everybody looks on the second page of the.
Line 53.
Yep.
Why is that highlighted?
Uh, that is highlighted across for 358, um, on, because I believe it was such a discussion point for Elizabeth and I.
Okay. And it's fine.
Okay. So that's, those amounts are every year you would spend $8,500 on, on that asbestos removal, correct?
That is correct. And, and because they're both connected, because we have to abate asbestos out of Hartley at the same time that we have to replace carpet.
Okay.
And you can use that same funding, you can't use that same category to replace. So if we were a cheat for me, to, to, when we're working with Colin of, okay, wait a minute, if we're going to base, how, we got to fund in a different way, I don't want to refund it, it has to come from a different category to put it back in. So it's a cheat for me to make sure I'm, we're budgeting appropriately for both items, the basement as well as putting the floor back in.
And.
Right.
An interior surfaces deals a lot with flooring and that's, it, it was a constant go back and forth on where do we put this funding? What's our priority? What is the biggest?
Uh, for, for, cause I, I think I understand it now, so like, like 2023, that there's $8,500 for the abatement, but then there's also, you're going to spend $40,000 to re-carpet.
Yeah.
Correct.
So they both go together. They're not a, it's a package deal each year. That's kind of why their highlight is, because it's, it's 48, 48.5 in 2023 for carpet and asbestos abatement.
Regardless, what we decide, you still need to do that. Maybe if we decide to do remodeling, you would pull money from maybe different, different bucket, but you still need to replace the carpet, you still need to do abatement.
Correct. That, that, uh, that $40,000 deals with the media center. That is a 1989 carpet.
Okay. Thank you. That's.
Yeah.
Good question.
I, I've got a question.
It's a lot of lines.
It, it is. It's a lot of information.
Go ahead.
I've got a question. Um, long-term, if we would pass a bond issue for something, long-term facility maintenance money cannot be used with the bond issue, correct? That's separate. It's for repair, remodeling, updating.
Do you want to explain that, Elizabeth? Yeah, essentially, yes.
Sometimes you can partner. So for example, if there's a project that qualifies, like indoor air quality or a, a basement, um, or a fire safety, you can partner them, but it, it can't alone cover your entire re, whether it's even remodel. It's not necessarily for new, it's for replacement. So, so some projects may be eligible, but definitely not the entire project.
Okay. So if.
Junior high school, if we partnered like for indoor air quality, we were able to, um, tap into one of our facility maintenance in addition to the bond that we sold with voter approval.
Okay. So if we went out for a bond issue and it passed, can we couple, uh, capital improvement money with that bond issue or do they have to remain separate?
You, you could also do that. And maybe one thing I, I could point out on the five-year plan then. So that's, that's the other document that you probably have in front of you. Um, I'm going to bring that one up in front, so it's in front of me as well. So in next year is our last year that we have, um, a payment on our capital facility bond. And we have taken out a bond, basically borrowed from ourselves, uh, for 10 years to pay for roofing replacement and bleacher replacement. Uh, roofing replacement at the, the, the WIS building was the junior high at that point and the bleachers of the junior high high school. That was about a million dollars. Next year is the last year that we have that payment. So that's why in 24, 25 and 26, if you go to the very bottom, those balances are a little bit larger. That does give us an opportunity, whether, whether we do a bond or not, or whether we maybe again couple it, we could, um, partner that opportunity as a capital facility bond where we would not need to go for voter approval or borrowing from ourselves and probably the same dollar amount, we could probably pull about a million dollars out of that where we're not having any tax impact. That is really just us saying, okay, now we're, for the next 10 years, we're going to commit about $150,000 out of our capital facility plan to make that payment towards another $1 million borrow, basically.
Okay. So this is just a hypothetical question, but let's say we went out for a bond issue of 28 million. Could we borrow against ourselves for 3 million of that and reduce, uh, what the taxpayers would have to pay down the 25 million?
In theory, yes, but we don't, uh, we're that, we're not big enough as a district. We, we wouldn't be able to do all the other things on our capital, on our five-year plan. Basically the full amount that we would be allocated would go toward that bond payment and, and we wouldn't be able to do it. So that's what I'm saying, like about a million dollars is probably what we could pull, um, as a. a, as borrowing from ourselves for a capital facility bond, out of our five-year capital outlay plan.
Okay, so what, if we came up with a figure for a bond vote, we could maybe eventually reduce that by a million dollars because we, we're going to pay that another way?
So we come up with, we come up with the price for the cost.
It's something to consider from start to finish.
I was going to say, you'd come up with the price of the project. Price of the project might be 28 million, the bond we'd ask for would be 27, potentially. You wouldn't ask for 28 and then somehow reduce it at that point.
That's what I was getting at.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other, the other thing, just speaking of tax impacts, just to keep, I know we've talked about this in the past, I mentioned that they didn't change the ag credit, but it still currently sits at a place where whatever dollar value we were to place as a potential question, 20% of that would be the, basically what would come out for the, for the ag credit. So if we were to ask for, say, 25 million, and, and that were to be supported by our community, 5 million of that would be ag credit the state would pay. And our, essentially, our taxpayers would pay 20 million. Now, that is only a benefit to the, from the ag land perspective, but anyway, that's just something to consider as part of the conversation as well.
And maybe to your question a little bit as well, another way you could potentially look at it, if, you know, say we are focused on more elementary level, but we know we maybe need to do work at Central Building at some point, maybe that's where we say, okay, capital facility, our, our capital outlay plan, we know we could at some point borrow $1 million, so we can keep that out of a bond, and, and again, fund that ourselves to try and take care of Central Building. That's just a thought, obviously, we have not even embedded that or gone down that road, but it does give the district a little bit more flexibility for other projects that we know are, you know, will potentially be on the horizon. So maybe we just keep that separate and say, okay, Central, we're going to take care of our, on our own, it's just a thought.
Okay, another question, if you could answer this one. We're still paying on the high school remodel, correct?
Yes.
Okay. If we would go out for a bond issue, and I'm just going to use that figure again, 28 million, just for a figure to use, what's going to happen in the coming years with that when we eventually get the high school bonds paid off?
So I don't know if you remember when Ellers was here, they kind of had that step financing available, so basically, that's what they would do is, to, to wrap around our current debt, our, our initial payments would be much smaller, and then once all of our other debt starts falling off, then our new debt would be increased so, so the community doesn't see, you know, this big roller coaster, they, they try to flatten it out for us to keep it even keel, so it would be smaller payments for us right up front, and then once, like I said, once our other debt starts falling off, then our new debt we can pay more on as, as the growth, if that makes sense, and I don't, I see Eric's maybe, I don't know if he's looking or not.
So essentially, a smaller increase until our current debt is paid, and then equalizing, and so, so you don't really notice, it's not really, it's not like a decrease, you just kind of continue.
Correct.
Right?
So I'm forwarding this to Caitlin right now, and we can bring it up on the screen here to show everybody.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's a great point.
Yeah, I remember when they did show us that.
Like loan, you balance out your payments. Knowing that we would have to do something with Hartley.
With Hartley, exactly.
Yep, yep. And 2025, I think.
It's the one that looks like that.
Was it 2025 or 2030 that that step takes place?
It's the 20, 2030.
2030, right.
2030, I think it's the 2030 pay year, 2031.
Yep.
If you go to, can you open that up more? No, just, just open the email, is it in the email chain? No? All right. I didn't forward you the whole thing. Sorry. Good thing we're in work session.
There's stuff all here.
Very good. Yeah. Pressure's on the internet now.
While you're waiting for that, I just wanted to point out, but also ask a question, there's obviously a number of unbudgeted items in the LTFM plan. A big one of those is 1.2 million to replace galvanized domestic water pipe in Hartley.
Yes, and that is a 2020 figure.
Okay.
That is by estimates of what has happened in the construction field, that, that price has doubled.
Okay. All right.
Double? Double.
So that's, so if we do nothing, that is a need.
That will continue to be a need.
Yes. And then if we do either option, either it gets absorbed in a remodel, or it's an unnecessary need because we have a new building.
That is correct. That is something that we would have to assess, yes.
Okay.
So what are, what interest rates are bonds selling at right now? And what do you anticipate, what do you anticipate for interest rates coming up?
Yeah, the, Elizabeth, do you have, do you know that the most recent cost that they were projecting was 4%? That's what they gave us. That's the most recent information we have. Yeah. I don't know that I have a prediction on that, personally.
I mean, are there, are there, there certainly being bonds being sold, bought and sold right now.
Sure.
Other, do you have any idea what the rate, what rates are they at? I mean, that's.
I don't, I can find out easily enough. I don't, I can, we can ask Ellers. Yeah.
I mean, the cost of waiting is, is there.
Yeah, it was, it was 3.5 when we looked at that, last set of this.
$5, $5 diesel fuel is back in this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Particularly in the construction field.
Yeah. Yeah, we certainly can ask, I don't want to, I don't want to posit a guess, but we can certainly ask Ellers that, because they're working on things right now, I know they are.
So, so realistically, it's 25 is the tax shell change, 2035 is another one.
Well, so this is just an, if you look at this one, because I saw the same one, this is an example.
Oh, this is brand.
The top, it's not our district.
Oh, okay, okay.
Go to the next slide, go to the next, the next screen. This is our current, this is our current, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this one is, is our current load, which demonstrates the, where we are now, if we were to put something more on here, it would sit here, right? And then as this goes down, where we have 2031, when that goes down, 2036, we're going to dump that last one. Sorry, that was the example district that was up there, my fault.
That's what I remember too, that it was going to go up a little bit, but not a whole lot because it's back loaded.
Colin, you might have said this already, but building costs over the next two, three years, best guess? Best guess?
I really dread to guess.
I don't disagree with that.
I, I've heard everything from 8%.
Per year?
Uh, per year. 8% to upwards of 12 to 15, and.
Best guess? Yeah.
Dread to guess.
You agree with that?
Absolutely, I can, I, personally, I can attest to this, absolutely.
So, so in this long-term facilities maintenance plan, obviously, you have things as if we do nothing, but if we decide to, say we decide to do the addition out of WIS, are there, are there a significant number of things on here that you would not need to do because, I mean, for, for Hartley, obviously?
Over the course of the 10 years?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We would, over the course of the 10 years, there's a difference in roofing. There's 50,000 square feet, and roofing projects can be upwards of $30 a square foot. And that's something that gets absorbed by a project, like you're describing, and that money gets reallocated towards other projects that are in our, perhaps not budgeted.
Okay. So, so we would, we'd still find ways to spend the money, just at, because obviously, there's lots of, there's a lot of need.
We, we are never short of ways of spending money.
But it could be a project that was pushed out a number of years, now if we get done.
Right.
Correct.
And we're, and we're stretching our resources, or we're not stretching our resources as much if we didn't have that fourth building, or if we didn't also have Hartley, yeah, okay.
My, my bigger concern from that perspective too, or a, another concern, is what's not on that list right now.
Okay.
That becomes on the list in the next three or four years, that pushes something else back. We get it done, we'd budget for it, those, those two are, do amazing work, we'd budget for it and get it done, but in years six or 10 in a plan like that are very flexible, and how many, how many roofs would get pushed out in there in five years if something else came up? So let's just, and every 10-year plan I've ever worked with has things that are unbudgeted and don't make the list, that's how it works. But there, there's likely, for as good as, as our team is, there's likely some things that get added to the list in the next several years if we don't do something now.
Well, just an example, I don't think the, the piping was actually on the list till very recently, correct?
No, it was not.
So you're talking, you know.
It just had to get done.
It, it had to get done, what's already been done, and then you're looking at another 3 million very soon down the road.
We are consistently doing assessments of our facilities to stay abreast of what their needs are, and what one year we're pretty sure everything's great, you can turn around and it can accelerate its degeneration, and you may need to address it sooner. That's facilities.
My one problem with doing something with Hartley itself is the age of the building. Financially, long-term, for a community, I feel that long-term, you've already, you already know what, what some of those small costs are going to be with Hartley, and they're not going, they're not going away anytime soon, and it's only going to get worse as that building ages more and more down the road. From what I see, personally, I think a new, a new facility would be my, my want, I guess, as far as, as what is out there, with, with what we know in costs and what is, what can be done to that building and what cannot be done in an expansion of that building is limited by ceiling heights, roof, roof lines, different things like that, so that's, I think that's where I sit.
Not to mention, whenever you, whenever you remodel an old building, it's, you're always going to find surprises that.
Yes.
That you never would have thought of, so.
Yes.
Like remodeling an old house.
Yeah.
It is.
One thing I would just offer to that comment is just, one thing we haven't talked at all about yet tonight is instruction, which is pretty much our primary goal, right?
Right.
And, and we can, we can remodel Hartley and make it as modern of a learning environment as we possibly can, and it will, it would be that, but it wouldn't be what the junior, senior high in WIS are.
Well, some of them, when we looked at some of the diagrams that they had done for us previously with the, with the flexible learning set areas that we could, on a new versus what would be available on the existing, there, there are a lot of differences.
And there's some staffing efficiencies that would occur, we've talked about that in the past too, just things like that.
Is there an argument on, at the table right now for remark, for remodeling Hartley? Does someone want to speak on that side?
I agree with what he said too on that, you know, if you're going to spend X amount of money, where are you going to get the best, where's, where's it going to last you the longest, would seem to be a new facility. The consideration could be is, what's the community feel about Hartley? And is, you know, I think maybe our data says we're split on that, but I agree, I, I think the WIS is the better one, but we have to make sure that's something we can get a community to agree to, so.
I think it was pretty split too, I mean, there were, yeah, it was a.
Then I think we need to bring into the conversation now the benefits of the instruction with the sharing of the services and how beneficial that will be.
Yeah.
On one campus.
I mean, for me, I, I do agree, you know, that, you know, you have new facility addition to this, and, you know, you have new gym, can be used for bringing more revenue because we can have more sports events, I do believe that, but, but, you know, if we take money out of the picture, now we put money, but the budget that we have, I still think there is too much unknown for the, you know, we have 25 millions or 31 millions, I still think, you know, I know we need to decide, but then I think when we start to dig, the cost will go up, and I, that's the one thing, and the second thing, I do not think this is the time to do it. I see necessity, but I don't think this is the time to just do it. And if we, you know, decided to go this way, then we can spend time to find out exactly if we do parking and all this stuff and think through, and then, like I said, I know cost will go up, but I think this is the right way for me.
And I, I think that that's an excellent point, I mean, that's kind of where we get down here too, with the, the next steps. We as a board decide what direction we want the district to go in, is that staying with Hartley in that space, or is it moving all of our educate, all of our, pretty much K-12 out to almost a single campus? And then, and then it's the timing, when is, is, your argument would be right now is not the right time, we need to push it off and, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. And so that's, that's an argument certainly to talk about as well, so, but I, I guess I'm, I'm curious from those of us sitting around the table who get to make these decisions, do we want to consider Hartley, a Hartley remodel, or are we ready to commit to, it's time to move on from Hartley? That's, that's my question. And, and I, I think of it as, what is the best solution? Looking forward into the future, 30, 40 years from now, what is the best solution for our district? Because it's not just, a year from now, it's not just 10 years from now. You know, we, this is not something that we're going to, that we want to have to regret. We want, we want to make the right decision, so.
And I would, the only thing, and I would add to that.
Yeah.
That it's really putting it on, in, on the back shelf more than abandoning that idea because the next step, to your point, Adita, is, the next step is, what does the, what does that traffic look like? What is the, what does the structure look like? Okay, and now for 25 million, can we even get anything done that's going to be worth making it to the project? For 28 million or 32 million, I can get with our, our consultants and get that work done in the next several weeks, because then we may come back to the table and say, that's not manageable now or in the near future, so what about the three model?
Right.
But if we can in concept look like, look at, this is where we really want, we think we want to go at, or, you know, this is the great, this is the right option, it's going to take 28 million, and then we talk about when that's in the picture. And not that anybody is, is, is hopeful that we, that we wait, because no one, I think, I don't think anybody around here thinks we, that would be, that's not a hardship in some ways, right? But at the same time, I, I am also of the mindset that if we know what we, if we think we know what the right fit is for the long-term in the district, then we don't pick the one we just can pass now.
Right.
Just to, just to do something.
Right.
That's, that's an argument to be made too, so.
I, I just want to make a comment about pushing it off into the future. Way back when there was a, I don't know, maybe it was a committee doing basically what we're doing now before the bond issue for the high school, I was at one of those meetings that I walked out with the, the guy who was then the mayor of the city of Waseka, and he said, I got a question for you, and I said, what? Now, this is probably back in 2015, 14?
Yeah.
And he said, let me ask you a question, I, he said, why did you ask for 30 million? And I said, because we did a survey, and that's what the community said they would support. He said, okay, second question, how much do you really need? And I said, 60 million. And he said, why? And I said, because we pretty much determined that the high school has needs and Hartley has needs, and if we took care of all those needs, it would be 60 million, but we knew the community would never support or could afford a $6 million bond. So we did the survey, they said that, that they would do, support 30 million, which they did, thank you, and we did what we did. But that was a conversation that was part of probably six, seven years ago. So basically, we kicked Hartley, kind of kicked the. So basically, we kicked Hartley, kind of kicked the can down the road for Hartley another seven years, which it probably had to be done. And I get the reasoning behind that. But in that six or seven years, the needs have only gone up. They've gotten to be even more. The costs have gone up a lot. So that's my concern about if you say not now. When?
You're kind of implying that it's not saying not now, it's saying not now again.
Well, yes, exactly right. That's what I'm saying. Now, you can agree with that or you can disagree with that or you can take that conversation and throw it in the trash can if you want. I don't care. But it just goes, because I was a part of that conversation and was only with one other person, it just proved to me that now, should we have gone for a $60 million bond? No. It never would have passed. But it taught me about when you... There comes a time when you can't kick the can down the road anymore. You got to do something about it.
And I agree with that. But I also, based on particularly the Morris Leatherman survey, there was a... Even though there was a lot of support, I mean, over, I think 75% supported doing something, whether or not they have a preference for what that is. But they also said, this is a hardship if you ask for this right now. And so I appreciate that too.
Yeah.
So I can 100% see, well, I shouldn't say 100%, but I can see the argument for not right now. But I also don't think five or 10 years from now. I think it's more imminent than that.
I agree. I think we're talking a year or two, not five or 10. And I think...
Because I think if you wait longer than a year or so, we potentially are going to have to sink millions into Hartley, whether we want to or not.
Right.
So, and that's, I mean, Colin, am I wrong for saying that?
No.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, and that's the other thing is that if you, let's say you wait two years, how much money are we going to have to stick into Hartley? And then let's say you go out for a bond and it passes, then, and let's just say it's to put an addition on WIS, then that money you stuck into Hartley for the last couple of years.
Then we have to be very purposeful on which projects we're really going to be focusing on if we've got the plan. Can I focus this back to, again, the first question? What is our preference? So that's our first question. And can we around the board, around the table here, make a preference? Because then, like say, if it's remodel Hartley, then I think we can talk about the timing. We can adjust that. If it's, we want to do the addition out at WIS, it sounds to me like you could come back to us in two weeks with a lot of information for us to determine the timing. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say two weeks and at worst case scenario, a few more weeks than that. But yeah, there's a lot we can get down in the next couple of weeks with that focus.
I guess I would be for adding on to WIS, but I wouldn't put remodeling Hartley completely away. I think we need to kind of keep it there in case. Or if we change our mind or whatever.
Be on the back burner.
Yeah, a back burner.
I would say we need more, like I said, we should consider both, but focus maybe get more details and more really specific money. You know, how much money would it be to really? Because we are just talking about, you know, WIS and parking and make a structure and all this stuff. Those questions, for me, they should be answer, you know, how much it would be. Because like I said, if you have $28 million and suddenly it will be 35, 40.
That's an issue.
That's an issue. And then for me, again, I do not, for me, I wouldn't say it would be for me push one, two years. It would be for me is four years. That's, you know, like I said, for me, I'm looking at the community in Wasika. There are no new jobs. There is no new development. We need to change this to get people here, young people with the kids, families, that they will stay here. And I know a lot of people come here for the school because we have good schools. But that's not enough to go back to people for 40 millions, $30 million, like just pay. And if you see our surveys, 70% of people were empty nesters. I mean, we need to get families, young families, and not only school, jobs and housing and stuff. And it will take time. As Eric mentioned, there is nothing in stone from the city that something will happen. I mean, for me, that's where I think, I do understand everything what we are telling money. But I'm worried you will build a new school and now we don't have kids. That's just my concern.
There's also the chicken and the egg question of, do you have to get the new school to entice the young families to come? Or do you have to get the young families so that you then have a reason to build the school? It's, I don't know if that's clear.
We have school, we have enough. If family comes, we still have enough for the kids to go.
We still have good school even without them.
And the other side of that coin is when a company is looking to relocate someplace, they want to have a workforce that's available to work for them. They don't go to places where there's no workforce, you know? So, yeah, so we get back to that chicken or the egg thing again, you know? How do we entice young families to come here? So there's a workforce here, so this company's going to come to jump. So it's, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of moving pieces here that we're looking at.
I did make that comment in our committee meeting the other day. There's, I've been through this a handful of times in my career and I don't think I've been through one with this many moving parts. And so that's just an interesting aspect of this particular question. But what I think I'm hearing from the board at this point is, knowing that this is a discussion, next steps meeting and not a voting meeting, is explore the addition onto WIS with some further detail in some of these areas. Bring us back what 25 million looks like. Bring us back what 30 million looks like. Make sure we uncover as many of the unexpected costs as we possibly can. If we could, they wouldn't be unexpected. But as many of those as we possibly can to fill in some of those details, which we certainly can do. And I think we were, well, I know we were waiting for that survey to tell us if the community clearly said remodel that building, then we don't need to go into this level of detail. But that's not what we're hearing. And I don't get the sense that's what the board is feeling. So I can take that direction and Colin, Elizabeth and I can work with that and the facility committee as needed and try to bring back as much information as I can to you at the 16th board meeting. Or if not, we have to have another work session, our July work session. We still are on track. You know, even if, you know, based on how we hash out these next few weeks of discussions, even if we were to choose November of '22 to ask something, again, August is our timeline to decide that. So we have most of the summer. So we still are on track. You know, again, I'm sensing some hesitation on that and that's okay because that's just part of the conversation we have to have. But even if that's where it ends up, we have time. So we don't need to feel anxious that we're going to run out of time on that regard. So is that a relatively fair summary of where we're at right now?
Yeah, I think the board definitely would like to have some of these answers about an addition, like have a clearer picture of what an addition would look like and what our cost options are. And I think that that would really help, so.
Because it is more than just the building.
Yes.
The, you know, the street cost and what we're going to have to do up and beyond as well.
Very good.
In your conversations with the city, if we had to do some, I don't, major street reconstruction out there, would they get in on part of that or would that be totally on the school district?
Well, you know, we build schools, the DOT builds roads, the city builds roads, right? And so, but there potentially could be some partnership if there's a mutual benefit to it. Right now, the, you know, the road north of Walmart there is leading out to that dead end out there. But there's lots that are plotted out there. So there's potentially some conversation we could have. But it's more of a access conversation probably than building new roads. We have enough, I went out there the other day, we have enough land on the south of that road, between there and our building, to loop something through there if we so chose. Yeah.
Question, if it goes to ballot in November 2022, when the construction will start? 2023?
Rough estimate.
How long it would?
24 probably?
I think perspective, we sold the 2015 bond in December. I believe we broke around spring of '17? It'll take that long for actual design. And depending upon where we go, so, and it might be different, right? So if you remodel Hartley, you have to wait for kiddos to be up. If you're adding on to WIS, they might have to, you might have a different timeline because you don't have to worry about displacing students. So it just depends as well.
But probably from when you go for a vote, you sell the bond, minimum a year probably before construction starts?
15 months typically is what I would see on the timeline.
But that goes on, if you pass it in 2022, the taxes go on you in 2023, correct?
Right. Well, it does depend on when you sell the bond. It was actually, we didn't anticipate to actually sell in December. It just, the interest rates were great until we sold as quickly as we could. But that might be another thing we can take into consideration is, okay, just because you pass the vote, that we need to sell right away. We might see what the temperature is of the interest rates at that point and then make a decision when you would actually sell the bond.
Okay.
Maybe that's one of the pieces of information of just to know. Have a rough guess on timing of what that means.
Yeah, we have some questions. We can ask Ellers for what our current rates are going and what they see happening and that going on that way.
Do we all feel good with conversation to this point and ready to get more information at the next meeting? Okay. Yes? All right. Thank you.
Very good. The last thing I would add is I just want to reassure the board, and I thought about this a lot in the last week or two, we are making progress. We are moving forward towards the next steps of the... I think that we are in a very volatile environment for being educators. And the methodical nature of doing this is going to serve us well. When whatever decision comes out, based on what the board decides, the fact that we did not rush to something and we're working through as many of the unexpected things that we possibly know, it's going to serve us well. And so I would just assure you all that I do feel like we're moving forward. I hope you feel the same. And we're just moving this process along. And we'll come back with some more information as we usually do.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you, Colin.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. So next meeting, June 16th. Same time, same place.
Very good.